Welcome to the zoning board of appeals. We are going into executive session for a few minutes before the hearings begin.
Do you want us to leave?
Yeah, not really, but you have to.
Just a minute, folks. Hold it before you go. We have to tell you that at this conclusion of the executive session, we will go back into regular session and you will be allowed back in. So don't leave the building or go home.
Okay.
Okay?
You should roll call.
Because we'll miss you.
Oh, yeah.
So we're going into executive session to discuss pending litigation with the town council. Grab a motion.
Second.
We need a roll call vote. Fineran.
Aye.
Duffy, aye.
Murphy, aye.
Nick, aye.
Nick, aye.
Haney, aye.
Please silence all cell phones and note that this meeting is being taped by FCTV. If there's any private party recording this hearing, please step up to the podium to request permission. I'll introduce the board and staff. On my far right is Mark Fineran. To my closest right is Frank Duffy, the clerk. My name is Suzanne Murphy, chair. And Nick Haney over here is a full voting member tonight. And we have Noreen Stockman, our zoning administrator. The zoning board of appeals is charged with applying the state zoning statutes as well as the town zoning bylaws and reviewing and voting on every application. All decisions are made through the public hearing process. Our goal is to hear testimony from the applicants and the public and to allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to the closing and hearing process in reaching a decision. Number one, to each hearing, to begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement for the hearing and read pertinent information from the file. Two, the applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation, but time may be extended by the vote of the board. Three, the board will then question the applicant. Four, then the public will be invited to comment. Comments should be limited to two minutes and be strictly related to the proposal. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the chair and should come to the podium. State your name and address for the record and please speak into the microphone. It will amplify your voice and record audio for the FCTV viewers. And we also have a moment right now before we start all hearings if anyone wants to make a public comment about anything that's not on tonight's agenda. Anybody want to come up? All right, let's go. Our first hearing tonight is a continuation Lawrence Lynch. Is Mr. Kirk in the room?
So this case was actually not opened.
Oh, it was not?
It was continued because of the date.
Got it.
So you may want to.
We're ready.
Read a few items into the record.
Okay, then I'll read the items into the record.
Let's do it.
Before you get started. This is application 10624 Lawrence Lynch Realty Corp., Falmouth, Massachusetts, applies to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to section 240, 12.1 of the zoning bylaw to renew existing special permit 20-90, that's the year 1990, for excavation and restoration and to allow continued use of processing and storage of materials. The subject property is known as Lot Zero. It also has a street address of 160 Thomas B. Landers Road in Hatchville, Massachusetts. The zoning district is AGA. Overlay District is the Great Pond Overlay District. We also have a note that DEP has approved Zone 2 Wellhead Protection Area up there. There are several previous zoning board of appeals decisions that are relevant to this particular matter tonight. There's 1965, case number 1882, which allowed a screening, mixing, crushing, and batching plant. There was 1968, case number 2175, which allowed the removal of sand and gravel from the property and had a 20-year life. There was also a case in 1990 where the ZBA issued and extended the earth removal to the full 36 acres. The street frontage is 880 feet, which is well in excess of the zoning district requirements. Thomas B. Landers Road is a public right-of-way. There are no nonconformities here because there is no structures we're discussing. We have referrals from engineering who caution us to be concerned about the stormwater permit. Board of Health has no comment. Conservation, no comment. Water, no comment. Planning Board, no comment. Assessors, no comment. The Building Department, however, has informed us that it considers the permit, that's the permit 1990, to be null and void, and requests third-party verification that any conditions have been met if that's an issue.
Thank you. Hi, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Edward Kirk, I'm an attorney in Oysterville representing Lawrence Lynch Corporation. There's been extensive correspondence with the Cape Cod Commission about this project and whether or not it needs commission review in order for the permitting process to go forward here in the town. And it's my understanding that the chief regulatory officer of the commission believes that this does require review by the Cape Cod Commission. And I was informed that as a result of that tonight, there would be formal referral by you as the original permitting authority to refer our application to the commission. And so I understand that's going to happen. And if that's going to be the case, we won't be back here to see you probably for some time.
Then I would make a motion to refer the case to the Cape Cod Commission per the information that's been given to us by the commission.
Okay, do you have a question?
Well, my question was simply, isn't the threshold for Cape Cod Commission 100,000 square feet? And this is well beyond that, right? So it's a no-brainer, so to speak?
Yeah. So that was a motion, Mark?
Second.
Frank?
Yes.
Do we want to have any public?
I guess we would have to have them.
I think we should before we.
Not on a referral.
Not? Okay. We have a motion, you second?
Yeah, even though they came.
Did you second?
Yeah, but I mean, I'm curious as to if there are any members of the public that are here wanting to speak relative to this.
The only thing they can speak about is a referral.
Right. What I would recommend is that upon the board's referral to the Cape Cod Commission, the Cape Cod Commission will take its time with this process, at which point in time the hearing will be back before the zoning board and we will renotice the public. So they would have certainly an opportunity at that time to talk about the case.
Well, my concern always is for the public.
Well, that works for me, though. It will come back to us. So, you okay, Nick?
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. All those in favor of referral?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, next we move on to 118 Oyster Pond. All right, let's find the file here. Give us some over here and get them out of the way. Are you representing tonight, huh?
I am.
Okay, this is application 11724 Melissa M. Befford, trustee, has applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to section 240, 10.2A of the zoning bylaw to raise and rebuild the existing nonconforming single-family dwelling at 118 Oyster Pond Road, Falmouth, Massachusetts. The zoning district is RB. The existing dwelling is 3,313 square feet. The proposed dwelling is 3,177 square feet. The flood zone is VE15 and AE13. There is a previous zoning board of appeals decision. It's number 35, 1995 variance in special permit for an accessory shed in the front yard less than 50 feet from the street. The lot size is 18,300 square feet in a district that currently requires 40,000 square feet. The street frontage is 95.1 feet in a district that requires 100. Oyster Pond Road is a public right-of-way and also it borders Surf Drive, which is a public right-of-way. Lot coverage by structure is presently 18.1%. It's going to go to 17.36% in a district where 20% is the limit. Lot coverage by structure parking and paving is 26.44%. It'll be, the proposed structure will be 24.14% in a district where 40% is the limit. The setback that creates the nonconformity is the one to the east to Oyster Pond, which is 22 feet 50 is required from the body of water. The property is set back 52.9 feet from the street and the other setbacks conform to zoning. The proposed height of the building will be 34 feet, which is within the 35 feet allowed by the zoning bylaw. As far as referrals go, the engineering department has asked us to inform the applicant that they will need driveway permits, also to pay attention to stormwater runoff, and advises us that there's a possible encroachment in the public right-of-way, which I think is Surf Drive, but somebody may explain that to us. The Board of Health has advised that a D-Nite is required for the property. Conservation Commission has approved an order of condition on December 18, 2024 for the proposed project. Water Department has advised that it's necessary to upgrade to a one-inch service with the meter to be located inside. The Building Department has advised us that they have designated Oyster Pond Road as the front yard for zoning purposes. Planning Board has no comment and the Fire Department has no comment. I did not note any letters of support or opposition.
Tom, before you start, we have a four-man board tonight.
Yeah, I saw that. What's the requirement, all four?
Yeah.
Yeah, you want to?
Doing it. Let's go.
We'll go. Okay. Yeah, the recommended, Tom Bunker, I'm a registered land surveyor with BSS Design. Before I get started, I was wondering, you read a referral from the health that wasn't sent to me, but I did have a later communication from Scott that did not mention the requirement for a D-nitifying septic system.
I don't think there is one.
That's what I.
Okay, excuse me if I misspoke. He said a D-Nite may be required.
And you allowed the space, so you're all good.
Okay.
Right, that's right.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure of that. Thank you. Yeah, so the existing conditions were, and the nonconformities were read out. I didn't realize about the shed. I was going to call that a nonconformity, but it's okay, I guess. So I have this plan and the property lines are highlighted in the orange line around here. I can jump right to this location. On the town GIS, it looks like, if you click on that area, it looks like it's actually a parcel owned by Hui, I believe, but it's not. There's the old, original layout of Surf Drive. Scott Schluter had some good pictures in his referral. Actually, if you take this line and extend it up and across the flume going out, or the river going out there, and it comes up to the bike path right up about in line with Surf Drive. And it's just that there was a widening, a realignment of the curve to Surf Drive going out this way to connect to Oyster Pond Road, but it did used to come down here in the intersection between Surf Drive and Oyster Pond Road was down in this location. It took some research and sleuthing to figure that out, but that's the case. So we did get the front yard letter saying that Oyster Pond Road is the front yard and this could be the side yard. Without that letter, this is actually a nonconformity here. It's only 20 feet from the house to this street line. And the other nonconformity is to the three-foot NGVD line is nine feet here, 10 feet, 38 feet, and this corner house is 47 feet over to here. Because the zoning does have a floodplain district, and I think this house is also nonconforming in that the floor of the house is too low in the flood zone. It's only 9.5 in the flood zone. As you read out, is 13. The velocity zone is out, the velocity flood zone is out here. The house is not in the velocity flood zone, but it is fully in the AE elevation 13 flood zone here. Think that covered it. The shed will be removed, so there'll be no more need for that special permit variance there. The septic system is also nonconforming, but that's to Title V, not to zoning. It's too close to the, it's too close to the wetland and we could do nothing about that, but it's also too close to the groundwater. And so on the next page, you'll see that we've elevated it to be above the, more than five feet above the groundwater. So that's that one. If I can. So this is the proposed plan, and I can go over the floor elevation. It's up to 15.5, so that's the building code design elevation is one foot higher than the A-zone, so it would be required to be at 14, but this is a foot and a half higher than that. And that's so that this would be usable storage area. So this is, this is a, well, it's basically a walk-through grade where the driveway is at five and a half and it'll come out here. So it only made sense to bring that up high enough so you could actually walk through it and out the back. But of course, it can only be used for storage, parking, and building access in that lower level, and there are no space down there. The setbacks are being, to the NGVD, that zoning line there is increased, the minimum on existing was nine, it's 13 here. It is 32 at this point, where it was basically, I think it was 10 feet at this location. The red line here is the existing house. So you can see it moved from this red line up here down to this point where the shed is, moved from 10 feet to 32 feet. This one has moved now, it's outside of the 50-foot setback in this location. And there is patio in this area, but the house is all retreated away from that and further out of the, it's actually out of the Falmouth Wetland Conservation Wetland requirement, velocity flood zone. And also on this line, because there is a front yard letter, the house is closer to this line, but now only a side yard, 10-foot setback is required. And this setback is 11 and a half right here. And as was read out, the, so the coverage has gone from existing 18.1 to proposed 17.36. That's the coverage by structures. And the coverage by structures, paving, and parking has gone from 26.4 to 24.1. So that's all good reductions there. We're under the zoning coverage. The nonconformities have been reduced, that is, the setback distances have been increased. The nonconformity to a street line here has been eliminated. The septic system is up on a retaining wall now. It's a mounted system to be more than five feet above the groundwater elevation, as is required. And in the health regulations for an upgrade, where we're more than 50 feet, but less than 75 feet from the wetland, which is over here, which the existing septic system was and we are now, required to put in pressure distribution. And that is shown as a septic tank in the pump chamber here, and the leaching field is up here on top of the fill that's placed inside the retaining wall. So also, as read, the peak of the roof will be basically 34 feet above average grade. That's one foot lower than the, than their allowed 35 feet. And shed has been removed. The front yard setback went from 52 feet down to 37 feet, so it still conforms. They basically moved the house back from the wetland resource area as much as possible and up to get out of the flood zone and away from the groundwater. We moved it as far as we could while still allowing the septic system to be put in here conforming to the setback requirements, so that no variance is required. We still have the driveway. You can turn around, it's actually a little better for turning around, so nobody will have to back out in here. The coverage has been reduced. Nonconformities have been reduced. The site is adequate for this use. It has been in this use for quite some time. There's no increase in bedrooms here either. It's a two-bedroom and will remain a two-bedroom. The utilities are adequate for this site. No impact on traffic flow or safety. I believe it's not any more detrimental. I believe it's not detrimental at all to the character of the neighborhood. So with that, I will leave it open to questions.
Sounds good. Mark, you want to start off?
Yeah. What I did notice is, first off, do you know what year they changed the layout of the road?
I think it was in the 30s.
30s?
19.
When they put the round in the corner there and changed Oyster Pond and all that?
Yeah, there's a big curve out here. It's, I'm not sure if it filled any. An interesting thing, there's another layout for Oyster Pond Road that actually is landward of where you drive now, but it's a paper street. But yeah, I think, I believe that was around the 30s, 35 or something when they made that change.
So the property that's south and, we'll say southwest, whatever, of the property line? Yeah, right along that line, back and forth?
This line here?
Yeah. Who owns all the property south of that? That's town property?
Town property. That's what was referred to by Scott that there is.
So how long has this house been on the town property and mowing, say, all the way down to that box of letters and up? Because the existing property that they're maintaining is well beyond the property line.
Oh, yes. And yes, and that's one of the things.
That almost puts these people in the position for adverse possession of town land, wouldn't it?
Well, according to the cant.
Yeah, well, then, do they plan on continuing to use that land that they've been usurping, so to speak? so to speak?
No, we started realizing that this would be a condition probably put in by the board. Actually, on the original plan we filed with Conservation, we included removing all this as part of that application until the State Agency for Endangered Species or whatever said, oh, you have to do lots of stuff. So we withdrew it from the Conservation application, so that when the requirement, if the requirement comes up to license it or remove it, then we'll go back and remove it under a lesser filing with Conservation, like an RDA.
So when this is complete, Conservation will take possession of that land that here before you've been mowing and using for a front lawn?
Well, it'll be up to Conservation and Engineering what will be required to be removed from it. I mean, you know, there's, if I go back, you know, there's a hedge, there's a flagpole, all.
All kinds of.
All kinds of things there.
Of German's.
Yeah, so it'll be up to Conservation and Engineering and you guys to see what should be done with it.
Well, obviously, you don't own it, so that's just going to naturally be part of the process.
Excuse me?
They don't own it, so it's naturally going to be part of the process anyway. It's like hardly likely that you're going to be able to maintain that and continue with your wall and hedges and mowing and whatnot.
Whether it's lawn, whether it's fully planted with native shrubs or whatever. I mean, we don't know what will happen with it.
It's not part of 118 anymore.
It's not.
Yeah. And other than that, you know, we're sticklers for lot lines and stuff, and you drove the stakes right into the patio, and I was very proud of you on that point.
I told my guy, be sure of that.
And you had offset stakes, which is a simple solution to omitting altogether. And I was glad to see one of those. It's actually the first time I've seen one.
Corner was inside the existing house.
In the back would have been the southwest corner, but there have been numerous occasions, although we had a house today where somebody drove one underneath. I was very proud of them for that, too. But other than that, it was fairly obvious about the use of the land there, and I was just curious because it is town land and such, but.
It is town land, yeah.
Other than that, I mean, I think it's a beautiful house to begin with, but it's a nice upgrade, and God bless them.
Frank?
No, I have sufficient information, I think. I think this looks like a very reasonable solution to the problems down there.
I thought I read in one of the referrals, it says must remove all encroachments. I think it was engineering.
Engineering.
Yeah. I did read that. Nick, do you have anything?
I'm just curious. You said it's town land, but it's not Woods Hole's, it's not Hui's land to the southwest?
Correct. Southeast, or this lot right here.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, we started out thinking that it was Hui because that's what the GIS says, but it's.
Both, right.
Couldn't, couldn't, it's shown as a street line in many previous plans, but it's a hard one.
Okay. All set?
Yeah.
Any other questions before we go to the public up here?
I'm good.
You're good? Anybody from the public want to speak on this project? Quiet. Looking good for you, Mr. Bunker.
Absolutely.
Anybody want to give me a motion?
I'd say we motion to close. Go on to the next one.
We have a motion to close in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, none. Anybody else want to give me a motion?
Motion to approve with conditions.
Second.
We have a motion to approve with conditions. Any further discussion? All set, everyone?
We got it.
We'll do findings?
Properties 118 Oyster Pond Road in Falmouth, owned by Melissa Beffert, trustee. Zoning district is RB. They've applied for a special permit under Section 240-10.2A to raise and rebuild an existing nonconforming single-family dwelling. The existing dwelling is 3,313 square feet, it's two bedrooms. The proposed dwelling is 3,177 square feet, and it too will be a two-bedroom house. Project is located in an AE 13 flood zone district and also in a VE 15 district. As previously mentioned, there's an existing special permit, 39-95 variance, and a special permit for eight-by-16 accessory shed in the front yard, less than 50 feet from the street, and based upon a representation during the hearing tonight, it will be removed. The lot is 18,300 square feet in a district that currently requires 40,000 square feet. Frontage is 95 and 1/10th feet in a district that requires 100. Oyster Pond Road is a public right-of-way, and the building commissioner has designated Oyster Pond Road as the front yard for zoning purposes. The lot coverage by structure will be 17.36 feet. Lot coverage by structure, paving, and parking will be 24.14 percent, excuse me, percent, 17.13, 36 percent, and 24.14 percent. The setbacks will conform to zoning. The height of the building will be 34 feet, and we have in referrals, which I previously read, under 240-10.2A, it's a special permit for a nonconforming structure. The board can find that the proposed structure will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming structure. And Section 240-12.1E of the zoning bylaw contains the criteria for the grant of a special permit. The board finds that the site is adequate for the proposed use. It is suitable for the proposed use. There's no negative impact on traffic flow and safety. There's no negative impact on neighborhood visual, visual character, views and vistas. There's adequate sewage disposal, as exhibited by a permit from the Board of Health. There are adequate utilities, and there'll be no impact on the supply of affordable housing.
Fine job.
And then we are.
And conditions.
What, Mr. Finnegan's encroachment issue?
I would say, yeah, it should be restored back to.
Must remove all encroachments.
Must remove, well, and then restore the land as per Conservation with administrative approval afterwards, because it is our, or something to that effect.
They can also petition the Select Board to maintain structures also, so.
Yeah, but these structures aren't on their property.
Right.
So they can't, they can't.
They can still ask, because it's off of their lot and it's into the town's road layout or the town's property. So they can, they can technically request prior to having to remove.
But they're not on their property. The layout extends 10 feet or whatever the road layout is beyond, and they're not eligible for that kind of a, I mean, this is blatantly into the town property. So they need to remove it and then restore it as Conservation says so. It's in the flood zone, the velocity, whatever all those different color stakes mean. It's not the same. They can't get a license for that from the Select, and I'm quite sure, but, you know, Conservation will determine that, and then she'll just come back to you for administrative approval, that's all, I would think.
Okay.
Okay. So other conditions are all town boards?
Mm-hmm.
D-nite may be required in the future, but not as of now?
Well, as Mark pointed out, there's something in the file that says they've made.
Yeah, they have sufficient space.
Sufficient space to add a D-nite.
So that's.
They will need a street opening permit.
Driveway permit.
Yep. I think that's it. Oh, town working hours, what'd you say?
Do they want the one-inch service?
Yeah, that's all town boards, yeah. New water line. Working hours, regular working hours. Shed's being removed.
Vehicles on the what?
What?
Work vehicles on the lot.
Yeah. Well, they may actually need police at that. You may have to contact police for that, maybe, because it's on such a bad curve. Maybe.
There's a good amount of parking there, though.
They could just take that upon themselves.
They're always responsible for that anyway.
Yeah. Any other conditions? Noreen, think of anything?
Two-bedroom.
Two-bedroom, yep.
Yeah.
Per plans, did we say that one? Per plans?
We're going to say it now, though.
Yep. I think that's it, right?
Sure.
All set, Frank? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Thank you. It did look like a great project. Okay, next we have 57 Carrot Shop Road, which has requested a continuance. So I'll make a motion to continue. If I could have a second?
Did they ask how long they wanted to continue up there?
April 10.
April 10 is our date. I'll make a motion to continue to April 10.
Seconded it.
There's a second? There's a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Okay, now we have 50 Namasket. No.
Okay, this is appeal, or application 12124. Taylor C. Kurth and Kara L. Lafferty, trustees, have applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to Section 240-10.2A of the zoning bylaw to allow a pool and to raise and rebuild the existing nonconforming single-family dwelling at 50 Namasket Road, West Falmouth, Massachusetts. The property is in an RB zoning district. There's no noted overlay districts. The existing house is at 1,488 square feet. The proposed house will be 2,436 square feet. It's a VE 18 flood zone. No previous decisions of the Board of Appeals noted. The lot has 38,436 square feet in a zoning district which requires 40,000 square feet. The property has street frontage of 161.42 feet in a zoning district which requires 100. Namasket Road is a private right-of-way at this location. The lot coverage by structure is currently 3.9 percent. It will be increased to 6.3 percent. The limit in the zoning bylaw is 20 percent, so it's within that. Lot coverage by structure, parking, and paving is 6.5 percent. Be increased to 9.3 percent. The zoning bylaw allows up to 40 percent, so it's within that limit. The setback to the east is 5.8 feet, which is noncomplying or nonconforming. To the west, it's 79 square feet. To the north, it's 20.4 feet, and to the south, it's 200 feet. The height of the building is 25 feet 5 inches. The proposed building will have a height of 34 feet 2 inches. The new front yard setback will be 20.7 feet. The side yard will be 6 feet, that's to the east, I think. Yes, east. The new rear yard is 191.9 feet, and the new, the other side yard is 56.5 feet. We have referrals from Engineering. They want us to consider stormwater runoff as well as dry wells for roof runoff. The Board of Health has advised that there will be a new septic system needed because of the increase in the number of bedrooms. Conservation has issued an order of condition on February 6, 2025. The Water Department advises that an upgrade in service to one inch is required, along with the meter being located in the house. Building Department has asked for height and elevation certifications, given the fact that they're going very close to the 35-foot limit of the zoning bylaw, and fire and planning have no comment.
Kevin, before, Attorney Clower, before you stop, former in board.
If I could make a request, Ms. Murphy? I know your practice has been to remain fairly silent on matters, but given that there's no margin for error, if you'd be willing to share your thoughts as part of the discussion, I think that would be very helpful.
Sure.
Much appreciated. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, Kevin Clower, and I am before you this evening representing Taylor Kurth and Kara Lafferty, the owners of 50 Namasket. I'm joined tonight by Norman Corchain of Salt Architecture. The applicants are seeking permission to raise and rebuild the existing nonconforming dwelling and to replace it with a new single-family dwelling. This property, 50 Namasket, is located in West Falmouth, just south of Old Silver. This may seem like deja vu all over again, as we were just discussing 51 Namasket two weeks ago. This particular lot is 38,436 square feet, and as was noted by Mr. Duffy, is in the RB zoning district and is also in a VE 18 flood zone. Presently, there's a three-bedroom, single-family dwelling and detached garage. Total footprint is 1,488 square feet. The existing structure is, structures are nonconforming. The front yard setback to the house is only 20.4, or 25 is required, and the side yard setback to the garage is 5.8, where 10 is required. It's otherwise conforming to the rear yard setback and all lot coverage requirements. This house was built in 1963. It is not in a historic district or on any list of significant structures. The applicants recently purchased this property, and the house is in need of significant repair and upgrades in order to accommodate their handicapped child. Given the location in the flood zone, VE 18, the scope of repairs really necessitates compliance with the flood zone standards, requires an elevation of the structure, so they must raise the existing and rebuild in compliance with those requirements. In this case, the bottom of the joists supporting the first floor of habitable space and mechanicals have to be at least two feet above the flood zone elevations. That's elevation 20 in this case, which is about 12 feet above grade. The applicant's proposed dwelling is an attractive design, which is in character with the neighborhood. Maintains the same number of bedrooms. The existing nonconformities are effectively unchanged. The front yard setback is effectively the same. It's gone from 20.4 to 20.7. The side yard setback to the east is also similarly slightly improved from 5.8 feet to 6 feet. Lot coverage will remain conforming. Lot coverage by structures will be only 6.3 percent, and lot coverage by structures, paving, and parking will be only 9.3 percent, both well below the allowable thresholds of 20 percent by lot coverage by structure and 40 percent for lot coverage by structures, paving, and parking. The ridge height is proposed at 34 feet 9 inches, which is largely due to the flood zone requirements, and the applicant is agreeable to a height certification at framing, as was noted in the building referral. And lastly, this will obviously now comply with FEMA requirements, which is an improvement. Given the existing nonconformities, this does require a special permit under 240-10.2A. That provision holds that pre-existing nonconforming structures may be changed by special permit, provided they're not substantially more detrimental than what exists. This board is asked to consider the standards of 240-12.1E and whether or not the alteration creates any new dimensional nonconformities, impairs views and vistas, and reasonably conforms to the neighborhood. There's no new nonconformity created by this proposal, and the existing nonconformities are effectively unchanged. Slight improvements. Design and character, the design isn't character of the neighborhood, especially considering the recent approval at 51 Namasket. There's no effective nitrogen, same number of bedrooms as presently exists, and there was a new septic installed in 2018. I should note that we submitted revised plans in January in response to the concerns of the Conservation Commission and to eliminate a bedroom by using a cased opening in response to the referral from the Health Department. This project represents a significant improvement over the existing conditions. It's designed to accommodate the lifestyle needs of the applicants and their son. Conservation has reviewed and closed this matter. The order of conditions was issued on February 6. There's no new dimensional nonconformities. There's no adverse effects that overbalance the benefits I've outlined. There's nothing about this proposal that is substantially more detrimental than what exists. I believe that it meets all the requirements of 240-10.2A and 240-12.1E. For these reasons, I would ask that this board grant a special permit, and I'd be happy to address any questions that you might have at this time.
Mark, you want to start off again?
Yeah. What's the length and width of the existing house?
I don't have the dimensions shown on the plan. Let me see if I have it on the architectural plans. I don't have it scaled out here, but the current square footage is 1,036 square feet in the house and 328 in the garage. So I don't have those exact numbers.
Yeah, they're not there.
Yeah.
And then you got to do the, the new house, you have to do some math to figure it out. I mean, just those, those dimensions are missing, as far as the board's ability to look at this house, you know, objectively. to look at this house, you know, objectively, whatever.
Well, so this does show all the dimensions.
Yeah, but we have to search, anyway. And, and as with the, if you add them up, it's, it's there. I mean, it would be nice if you just provided them upfront, you know?
I can discuss that.
Both instances, they're, you know, it's kind of blatant that they're missing.
So we can certainly ask the engineers to do that moving forward.
I mean, the, you know, the bulk trades left the station and all that. So, I mean, just to make our work easier, I mean, it would be nice if all those dimensions were included on the prints. Other than that, it's a nice spot. I mean, they own a fair amount of wetland and swamp, and God bless them, the, you know, I appreciate the 3 inches in the front, but you can see that's about all they had to give.
Yeah.
So I'm glad you pulled out the shoehorn on that for what it's worth.
Didn't, didn't dare call it an improvement.
No. Anyway, other than that, it's, you know, the neighborhood's trending that way, Kevin. You know, there's a couple more I saw the way down that we'll probably be seeing back somewhere in the near future as well. But other than that, I'm good to go.
Frank, you have any questions?
Not at this time, no. I think that Mr. Clower has given us the information that I need anyway.
Yeah. Well, you didn't tell us about what's at the end of the street again.
It is truly a beautiful spot.
But no, this looks like a great project to me. Practically mirrors.
I mean, it happens to be the same architect, happens to be the same engineer, but I do think Salt does a really good job of not, there will be similarities, but they will not look like mirror images.
It's funny, when I looked at the one two weeks ago, I said to Ashley, let me see the other one. I want to see, and they are, they're a little bit different, just enough.
Yeah.
I agree. And they have a lot of windows, which that's what I was looking for.
And also, the beach at the end of the street, the association is, allows the public to use it as long as they respect it, and I think that's extremely, says something.
Gracious, yes.
I think it's one of the nicest neighborhoods in town, isn't it, Kevin?
Might be, might be.
Nick, any questions?
No, no, good project.
Shall I go to the public? And you can follow up if you have any. Anybody from the public want to speak on this project? Wow.
I might. I didn't know, I didn't make a note of this when I read the previous information, but we have no letters on file.
Everybody's happy all around. I motion we close.
Second.
All right, I have a motion to close and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. I'll take another motion.
Motion approved with conditions.
Second.
Motion approved with conditions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. All right, let's do findings.
Findings, the property is 50 Namasket Road, West Falmouth. The zoning district is RB. They have applied for a special permit pursuant to section 240-10.2A of the Falmouth zoning bylaw to raise and rebuild the existing nonconforming single-family dwelling and add a pool. The existing dwelling, or the existing structures are 1,488 square feet. The proposed structures will be 2,436 square feet. It's in a flood zone, VE18. No previous decisions of the Board of Appeals. The lot is 34, 38,436 square feet in a zoning district where the minimum requirement is currently 40,000 square feet. Street frontage is 161.42 feet in a zoning district where 100 feet is the current minimum requirement. Namasket Road is a private right-of-way at this point. Lot coverage by structure will be 6.3%, which is within the 20% limit allowed by the zoning bylaw. Lot coverage by structure, parking, and paving will be 9.3%, which is within the 40% allowed by the zoning bylaw. The height of the building will be 25 feet, five, excuse me, it's currently 25 feet 5 inches, but the new building will be 24 feet 2 inches.
30, 34.
Excuse me, did I say 24? 34 feet 2 inches, which is very close to the 35-foot limit of the zoning bylaw, and that is why the building commissioner has, in his referral, requested a height and elevation certification.
Mr. Duffy, just one quick, one quick correction. It's 34 feet 9 inches.
Nine?
It's 34 feet 9 inches.
9 inches? That's even closer.
And they took the 3 inches from the front and added them.
Put it on top. I just, I want to make.
No, no, fine, fine. Maybe I wrote it down wrong, but I got the 34 anyway, so it's, it's close. There's a Conservation Commission order condition on February 6, 2025, and there are other referrals from the departments as previously read into the record. As, as I just mentioned, there are no letters in support, no letters in opposition. Now, under section 240-10.2A of the zoning bylaw, which is the provision for special permits for nonconforming structures, we make a finding that the proposed structure shall not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming structure. And under 240-12.1E, which are the criteria for grant of a special permit, we make the finding that the site is adequate for the proposed use, the, excuse me, the proposed structure. The site is suitable for the proposed structures. There's no negative impact on traffic flow and safety. There's no negative impact on neighborhood visual characters, views, and vistas. There's adequate sewage disposal. The Board of Health has advised us that a septic system will be required. There is adequate utilities, and there's no impact on the supply of affordable housing. And we note again that the building commissioner has required that there be a height and elevation certification, I guess prior to occupancy.
Well, I think, I think that's typically, the height certification is done at framing, typically.
Oh, whenever, okay.
So that can be our first condition, right?
Okay.
Okay. Other conditions per plans? Work hours? Jeez, there's a lot of space on this. I can't even say no sheds. All, all departments? It's a three-bedroom? I think that's it. Think of any other conditions?
Do I understand that the building, that Board of Health originally said you had, needed a new septic system, but you dropped one of the bedrooms? Is that right?
Correct.
You don't need a new septic.
We do not need a new septic. The septic was installed in 2018. The original plans showed three bedrooms and an office, which the office constituted a bedroom, but we enlarged the cased opening there to make that not a bedroom, so the existing septic is sufficient.
All right, okay.
Any other conditions, Maureen? You can let go. I think we're all set. Everybody ready to vote?
Let's go.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time on this one. We still have the next two.
Okay, next up, we have 13 Amphibian.
This is application 122, 122-24, 13 Amphibian LLC has applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to section 240-11.3A4 of the Code of Falmouth to raise and rebuild the existing single-family dwelling exceeding 20% lot coverage by structure. Property is at 13 Amphibian Road, East Falmouth, Massachusetts, which is in the Seacoast Shores neighborhood. The property's in an RC zoning district. It's in the Waukewite Bay Coastal Pond Overlay District. The existing structure is 939.2 square feet. The proposed structure is 2,582 square feet. There are no noted previous Zoning Board of Appeals decision on file for this property. The lot is 10,375 square feet in a zoning district, which currently requires 40,000 square feet. The street frontage is 100 feet, which is exactly the requirement of the zoning bylaw, 100 feet. Amphibian Road is a public right-of-way at this point. The current structure by, lot coverage by structure is 9%. It will be increased to 24.9%. The limit is 20%, but the Board of Appeals may grant a special permit up to 25%. The worksheet provided by the applicant is suggested that the neighborhood average is 14.83%. Lot coverage by structure, parking, and paving will be 33.9%, and that's within the 40% allowed by the zoning district bylaw. The current setbacks are conforming to the zoning bylaw. The height of the, of the proposed building will be 28.7 feet. This is what I took off the plan. The setbacks of the proposed street, proposed project will be 25 feet from the street, 19 feet from the east, 36.9 feet from the south, which is the back lot line, and 15 feet from the west. We have a Board of Health advising that you may need a D-Night in the future. Conservation has no comment. Water has no comment. The Building Department has no comment. The Planning Board has no comment. And I didn't see an engineering referral when I looked through the file.
I don't have one either.
You have one?
I do not.
Then he doesn't have one.
Oh, you don't have one either?
No.
Oh.
Well, just note. Now, we have 12 letters in support, and we have one letter in opposition, which we received yesterday or today. It's from a Mr. Ray Matrano, who identifies himself as the, as the butter at 10 Knollwood Drive, which is a director butter in the rear. This is a four-page letter, which will take a long time to read into the record, so I'm going to just kind of summarize it. Have you seen this letter, Mr. Clower?
I received it today, yes.
Okay. He has three concerns. One is the issue of drainage. He doesn't want any prop, any water draining off the property onto his property. He's also concerned about privacy and, and the lack of buffer. And he's also concerned about what he calls, in his letter, context and scale, that the new building relative to others on the street will be out of scale. It's much bigger than all the other buildings on the street. He also has some discussion in here about a variance, but there is no variance in the application. We're not going to consider a variance, and we're not going to vote on one, so I won't consider that. No.
Before I begin, there were three additional letters of support that I had in the budget.
So 15 total.
15.
Once again, Kevin, we have a four-man board.
My same request would, would hold, hold still here, but I think we have actually some people in the audience who are here for this, so would like to proceed tonight because they've taken the time out of their day to be here.
Got it.
So for the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm before you, representing Michael and Crystal O'Brien, who are the managers of 13 Amphibian LLC and the owners of this property as well. Both are present with us this evening. We also have a number of their neighbors who have come to express some support for the project. The O'Briens are seeking permission to raise and reconstruct the existing single-family residence on this property. 13 Amphibian is located in Seacoast Shores, the southern, the southern third of the peninsula. The lot's just over 10,000 square feet, and it's a residential C zoning district, and it is not currently in a flood zone. Presently, there's a small, single-family dwelling with a footprint of just under 1,000 square feet. It's in pretty poor condition, as you've seen. It is conforming to all setback and lot coverage requirements. As noted, the dwelling is in tough shape, and so they're proposing to raise the existing and construct a new dwelling. Mike and Crystal have owned a property just around the corner from here, 331 Edgewater West, for the past eight years, and have become very ingrained in the Seacoast community in that time. They've also undertaken a number of construction projects in the area. They have a growing family, and they often have friends and relatives staying with them. They plan to use this property for their own purposes. The proposed plans will not create any new dimensional nonconformities. The setbacks all meet or exceed requirements. Lot coverage by structure will increase to 24.9%, which does require a special permit pursuant to 240-11.3A4. There is a new Title V system already approved. It is not a denitrification system, but it's been designed to accommodate a denitrification system if so required. The proposed ridge here is 28 feet 7 3/4 inches. That's to the ridge. There is a roof deck railing, which is just slightly higher than that at 29 feet 4 inches. As noted, this requires a special permit pursuant to 240-11.3A4. That section allows for lot coverage by structure exceeding 20%, but below 25%. The board is asked to consider the size and height of structures in relation to the neighborhood, the effects of shadow on adjacent properties, the impacts on views and vistas from public ways, and the effect of nitrogen on coastal abeyments. I should note that there's been substantial support from the neighbors. There's 15 letters that are on file. The applicant went door-to-door with his plans to review and discuss these, the, the proposal with the neighbors prior to submitting. As we've gone over a number of times, Seacoast Shores is a varied and changing neighborhood. It's very much in transition, contains homes that are both quite modest in size and also very substantial. There is a lot comparison worksheet. This property is larger than the immediately surrounding homes on Amphibian Road. However, the board has recently approved a number of homes, either similarly sized or larger, very close to this property, and found those to be in character with the neighborhood. The proposal is only 500 square feet above the 20% limitation. Otherwise, it could be constructed by right. We could achieve similar square footage, under 20%, but that's not what they're trying to do. They're trying to, they're proposing a house that is attractive in design and fits with their needs, that is allowable by the board. There's no impact on views and vistas from public ways. Amphibian is a private road in this area. The effect of shadow should be negligible, as the ridge is only at 28 feet 8 3/4, and it's approximately 75 feet from the neighborhood to the west, 45 feet from the neighborhood to the east, and 65 feet from the neighborhood to the south. And as was noted, there is a new Title V, which has been designed for an appropriate number of bedrooms and approved by the Board of Health. I wasn't made aware of the letter submitted by Mr. Matrano this morning. He had reached out to me two weeks ago. We promptly responded to his email in a thorough and comprehensive manner, addressing his concerns and agreeing to a number of his requests. And we also encouraged dialogue with the applicant. Provided him with the applicant's number and suggested that they speak directly. A copy of that email correspondence was submitted. I, it was noted as part of his letter. I didn't see it, but I did forward that to the board this morning as well. I'd like to address some of the issues that were raised in the letter, as well as point out some of the falsehoods that were included. It was stated the O'Briens didn't reach out. The O'Briens did reach out to their neighbors. They went door-to-door. Unfortunately, not everyone was home. Mrs. O'Brien specifically discussed this project with Mr. Matrano's wife, well in advance of the hearing. We did correspond with Mr. Matrano. We addressed his concerns, his questions and concerns regarding grading, lot coverage, and privacy, provided an explanation regarding the grading and runoff, noting that the existing grade will not change in any significant way. If anything, it'll be made flatter, moving the existing 15-foot contour further from the 14-foot contour. We also explained that dry wells have been proposed to contain roof runoff. We did agree to a vegetative buffer. There is an existing 6-foot fence, and the applicant intends to add evergreens along the length of that fence, 6 to 8 feet in height, which are intended to help with both runoff and privacy. It is simply untrue and offensive to say that responses were inadequate or that the applicant was uninterested in addressing his concerns. Relative to the further concerns expressed in his letter, the drainage, as mentioned, is effectively unchanged. If anything, it's made flatter across the lot. We're prohibited from increasing runoff to the butters, and we are installing dry wells and plantings to assist with appropriate drainage. This will be an improvement over what exists. As to context and scale, as noted in this presentation, this may be large for the street, but it is not out of character at all for the neighborhood. It will comply with all setback and lot coverage requirements. Mr. Matrano cites approving this as a concerning precedent, but to not approve this would be contrary to precedent. Just within the last few years, this board has approved a number of similar homes, including 72 Woodside, 63 Bayside, 205 Edgewater, 182 Edgewater, 258 Edgewater, 11 Plymouth, 50 Angleside, 134 Edgewater. And those are just the ones I've permitted in the last, say, year and a half. Rather than being a cause of community concern, as indicated by the letter, this is largely supported by the community. There are 15 letters to support, many of whom are here tonight. As to the buffer, the existing trees were removed fairly recently, which is necessary for the construction and the septic installation. One of the neighbors had taken them down so we could use it as firewood, which the O'Briens agreed to. The O'Briens agreed to plant evergreens along the existing fence, which, again, would be 6 to 8 feet in height, which grow fairly rapidly. Mr. Matrano demanded 12-foot trees from the outset. The O'Briens offered to split the cost if he wanted to install those trees on his lot, which he did not find acceptable. The letter references efforts to work together, but that's not accurate. Making demands is not cooperative. The O'Briens offered a number of concessions and paths forward. Mr. Matrano's letter also spends a significant amount of time discussing how the application does not meet the standards for variance, which would be true, but for the fact we didn't apply for a variance. This is a special permit under 240-11.3A4. I've already outlined the board considerations by which that special permit can be granted. I believe this application meets all of those standards. It is true, as I've mentioned, that the house could be constructed without the benefit of a special permit by reducing the footprint. They could eliminate the garage and the space above, but that's not what the applicants want to do, and the concerns of Mr. Matrano would not be addressed by that. What I found particularly galling was the line that said this could have been avoided through open collaboration and transparency. The O'Briens and myself have been incredibly open. We've tried to dialogue. We've addressed his concerns. We've responded to emails. We've suggested that they talk together. We've agreed to much of what he requested, but certainly certain demands simply went beyond what the O'Briens are willing to accommodate. That doesn't make them obstructionist. That doesn't make them unwilling to work with someone. I can tell you what isn't open, collaboration and transparent. It's submitting a letter of opposition the day of a hearing without the courtesy of providing it to my office when he's already emailed me. Thankfully, the ZBA staff is diligent in distributing these matters, for which I'm very grateful. The applicant's proposal is a significant improvement over the existing conditions, both for the applicant and the neighborhood. There's no new dimensional nonconformity. There's no dimensional nonconformities at all. The proposal is in character with the evolving neighborhood. There's no impact on views and vistas from public ways. There's no effect of shadow on adjacent properties, and there's minimal effect of nitrogen on coastal abeyments. There's no adverse effects that overbalance the benefits. There's nothing about this proposal that is substantially more detrimental than what exists. I believe this meets all the requirements under 240 11.3A4 and 240 12.1E. I'd be happy to address any questions that the board may have.
Can I start?
Yep.
Is the six-foot fence in the back? Is it only in the back? That's all I could see.
Yes, it's only along the back line.
And that's going to stay and be maintained?
Mm-hmm. And that's going to be, that'll be directly in front of or behind the vegetative buffer.
Right. And I appreciate, as you know, I nag about going around and talking to the neighbors. I appreciate that big time. And this looks like a good project to me. That's about all I have.
This is the letters of support that I thought was pretty instructive.
Good, that's nice. And we had a comp sheet, too. Mark, you have any questions?
Where's the house?
This is the locus, and this is Mr. Matrano's property right here.
Okay, that's the, right behind. Just a couple of things. There was a southeast stake was missing for the house, but I wasn't going to dig in the snow for it because my feet were already wet. Just one thing about the, anybody knows that 21 feet is more than enough room to put the D night in, but oftentimes it's noted on the plans. Other than that, I mean, you know, everything's getting bigger there, and honestly, I have to say that Mr. O'Brien builds some nice houses and goes a little bit extra and puts some details on there, and I just think that's worth noting.
Frank?
One of the concerns in the letter we received, which we've been talking about from Mr. Matrano, is concerned about stormwater runoff onto his property. We do not appear to have a referral from engineering, but they typically suggest that we put a condition on that all stormwater runoff be contained on the lot. You'd have no problem with that?
That's a standard condition. I'll note, we have, we do show--
Well, detail right there.
Yeah, we show proposed dry wells on either side of the house. The grade here, you see the 14-foot contour and the 15-foot contour. This is being pulled slightly back, further away, so it's really flattening out a lot more than anything, but we'd certainly be open to that as a condition.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Nick.
We should probably look at engineering's normal--
It is a condition anyway.
No, but we should probably look at engineering's normal conditions and include them all.
Yeah, but I mean, all roof runoffs supposed to go with the dry wells. He's got a detail right there, so, but it's a normal condition anyhow.
You know what I mean? We should look--
Or rain garden, if they prefer.
Yeah. Nick, you have anything?
I don't. Nope, looks good.
All ready for the public? Anybody else have anything?
I hear what they got to say.
All right, guys. Big night out, huh? Come on up. Come on up. We just need your name and address. Come on up, sir.
Yeah, I live at 15 Amphibian Road, which is right next door to this--
Say your name.
--building.
Because everybody in the public wants to know.
Oh, so how do we turn?
You're on.
You're on. You're live.
All right. All right. It just--
Al, tell them your name, honey.
Oh, my name. My name is Al Ronstrom, and I, we've had this house at 15 Amphibian for about 16 years now we've been living down there. Mr. O'Brien, he has been doing work around the area and everything, and I have never seen anything that I wouldn't want to live in myself all the time. It's just, he does beautiful work, and that kind of says it all when you're putting it together, you know? I mean, I've been a carpenter all my life, and I've worked many places, all in town, Wellesley, and everywhere, you know? And I've very rarely seen as nice work--
You appreciate good work, huh?
As Mr. O'Brien does, yes. That's just about all I would say.
Great, sounds good. Thank you. Anybody else want to come up?
Let you give him the microphone.
Does he have a dance routine, too?
Not for a while. My name is Bob McGoughlin, and I'm from, if I should talk a little bit better. We live in this neighborhood where Mike's really part of the whole situation.
What's your address?
What's our address?
Your address.
What's our address?
28 Amphibian.
Our address, 28 Amphibian Road?
That's us.
Okay. Okay. But there's a lot of pluses that go along with anything Mike does, and it really impacts everybody. You know, you're saying like, so what's going on for the weekend? Mike's pig roast. So it's that type of thing where everyone has a favorable comment about everything that they do, and I support it 100%.
Thank you.
That's great. Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Yeah, mine. Mine. I'll say one thing. Hi, my name is Bob Ginetti at 28 Knollwood Drive. I'm down the street from the people. I've lived down here since about '83, and when you see new houses come in, that's what you want in this town, because some of the houses you see are really dilapidated, and the one that he took down there was dilapidated so bad, nobody could live in it. So this is a good point. This is what we're here for, really. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So noted.
That's kind of scary, actually. Any further questions up here?
None.
Everybody's all set?
Motion closed.
Second.
I have a motion to close in a second. All set? All those in favor of closing? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None?
Motion will approve with conditions.
Second.
There we go. Motion will-- With conditions.
The application is for 13 Amphibian Road, East Falmouth, Massachusetts, in the Seaco Shores neighborhood. The zoning district is RC, and the application is for a special permit pursuant to Section 240 11.3A4 of the Falmouth zoning bylaw to raise and rebuild the existing single-family dwelling exceeding lot coverage by structure, which is of 20%, not more than 25%. Properties in the Waukewaite Bay Coastal Pond Overlay District, not in any flood zone. There's no noted previous decisions of the Zoning Board of Appeals on file. The existing single-family dwelling is noted at 939 square feet. The proposed single-family dwelling is 2,582 square feet. The lot is 10,375 square feet in a zoning district where the current requirement is 40,000 square feet. The lot's frontage is 100 feet, and so it conforms to the minimum frontage requirement of the zoning district. Now, I have a question, Mr. Clower. Is this a public or private way here?
Private.
It's private?
Yeah.
All right. So Amphibian Road is a private right-of-way at this location. The current lot coverage by structure is 9%. It's increased to, proposed to increase it to 24.9%. The limit is 20, but by special permit, we are allowed to increase it to 25%. As the worksheet submitted by Mr. Clower notes, that the neighborhood average is 14.83%. Lot coverage by structure, parking, and paving will be 33.9% within the 40% limit of the zoning bylaw. The current structure conforms to zoning, so we're not dealing with a nonconforming structure here. We're only asked to exceed lot coverage by structure. The height of the proposed building is 28.7 feet, and the--
Mrs. Duffy, I'd just note that the height of the railing is 29, 4 and 1/2.
So that's the railing on the top, 29?
Yeah, the roof deck thing.
All right. So the ridge is, the ridge is correct at--
28.7?
Yeah, 28, 7 and 3/4, but the railing height is 29, 4 and 1/2.
Okay, but they're both within the 35 feet allowed by the zoning bylaw.
But the railing height is actual because they use the deck.
I read the previous referrals into the record earlier. We now have 15 letters in support and one letter in opposition, which was discussed at the hearing. So under Section 240 11.3A4 of the zoning bylaw, this is the provision that allows us to grant a special permit for a structure to exceed lot coverage by structure, maximum 25%. We make a finding that the site, size and height of the proposed structure relative to the height, average height and size of neighborhood, excuse me, of structures in the neighborhood is reasonable. We make a finding that there'll be no adverse effect on adjacent properties by shadows. There's no apparent effect on views and vistas from public ways, and there's no issues with nitrogen and coastal abeyment noted or raised by the Board of Health. Section 240 12.1E of the zoning bylaw contains the criteria for the grant of a special permit. We make a finding that the site is adequate for the proposed structure. The site is suitable for the proposed structure. There's no noted impact or adverse impact on traffic flows and safety. There's no noted impact on neighborhood visual character views and vistas. There's adequate sewage disposal. There's adequate utilities, and there's no negative effect on the supply of affordable housing.
Nice.
One point here. The plan from the engineer lists Amphibian as a public right-of-way.
Yes, that's where I got it.
I checked the street listing. I checked the town's street listings today, and it is noted as a private road, so within town, so that was just an error on the plan. If you'd like us to revise that and submit for the file--
No, it's fine. It's just, the only difference there will be whether you'll need, you know, any type of driveway permit or something like that. With private, you would not. Public, you would, potentially.
My understanding is most of those interior streets on Seaco are still considered private.
Yeah. They've been taking some, I noted that Amphibian looked to me to be in fairly decent condition--
Yeah.
--which suggested it might be public.
Well, I checked the street listing today. I have the street listing--
All right.
I did the same thing, and I wrote private. Okay, conditions for plans, work hours, all boards, but we're going to have to do the storm management?
Right, so I would suggest that if there's not an engineering referral in the file, that you put in the typical standard conditions for--
Dry wells and/or rain garden.
Yeah, and then the provision about stormwater management.
Yes.
This isn't Concom, so--
Right.
Yep.
Posting the address, you know, if they need a construction entrance, that will certainly let you know.
Four-bedroom new septic. We already have that. Hours? I think that's it, right? Think of any other conditions?
No. We've got the stormwater management, so that's, take care of that complaint.
Yeah, I think we're good. You okay? Okay, ready to vote?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Great.
Thank you very much.
And next up, we have 26 Deacon Avenue.
Oh, it was probably--
I'll just throw Ohio of trash? Trash?
Yeah. It was probably with the--
Yeah, okay.
Okay, this is application 123 of the year 2024. Robert Parker and Pamela Parker have applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to Section 240 10.2A and 240 11.3A4 of the Code of Falmouth to raise and rebuild the existing nonconforming single-family dwelling located at 26 Deacons Avenue on Falmouth Harbor in Falmouth, Massachusetts. The zoning district is RC. The overlay district is the Falmouth Inner Harbor Overlay District. There's also, I have a note here that it's in a historic district. Is that--
I don't think--
Well, okay. We don't have a referral from Historic. Historic says, no, they don't have a--
Yeah, we have no comment from Historic.
They have no comment from them anyways.
They wanted to make it one.
The flood zone is AE13. The existing structure is 1,090 square feet. It's a three-bedroom house. The proposed structure is 984 square feet. It's a three-bedroom house. There are no previous Zoning Board of Appeals decisions on file. The lot size is 3,000 square feet in a zoning district which currently requires 40,000 square feet. The street frontage is 50 feet in a zoning district which currently requires 100 square feet. Deacons Avenue is a public right-of-way at this location. Lot coverage by structure currently is 36.3%. It will be reduced, actually, to 32.8%. The limit is 20%, so it's nonconforming for that purpose both ways. Lot coverage by structure, parking, and paving is currently 37.1%. It will be increased to 38%, so it conforms to the 40% limit of the zoning bylaw. According to the worksheet supplied by the applicant, the neighborhood average of lot coverage is 24.41%. The setbacks are nonconforming to this property. To the east, it's 1.9 feet. To the west, it's 3 feet. To the north, 3.4 feet. And to the south, it's 1.8 feet. The new setbacks will be to the east, 29 feet; to the west, 3.5 feet; to the north, 8 feet; and to the south, 6 feet. The proposed height of the new structure is going to be 31.8 feet. We have a referral from engineering requiring noting that a driveway permit will be necessary, and also noting that there are various encroachments in the front yard into the layout of Deacons Avenue, which the engineering department has asked us to address, and it may need some relief from the Board of Selectmen, depending on what you're planning on doing. But the fence is in Deacons Avenue, and the engineering department suggests they don't like it. The Board of Health has advised us that a D night is required, which they have approved. Conservation held a hearing on January 29, 2025, and issued an order of condition on February 6, 2025, for the property. The water department notes that an upgrade to a one-inch service is required with the meter placed inside. Fire department has no comment. Planning board has no comment. Historical sent us a note saying they're not concerned. We don't have a, I didn't note any letters in support or in opposition on file, and we'll let you take it over.
Thank you very much. Good evening again. For the record, Kevin Clower. I'm before you representing Bob Parker, who's the owner of 26 Deacons Avenue. We're seeking permission to raise and rebuild the existing nonconforming dwelling. So 26 Deacons is located at the very edge of Falmouth Heights, facing Falmouth Harbor and set well below the properties along Grand Ave. This is a dense and still largely seasonal neighborhood. The lot, as has been noted, is only 3,000 square feet. It's the RC zoning district, and it is an AE13 flood zone. I can say this in earnestness, this is a beautiful street. It is a really beautiful street. Presently, this home is a three-bedroom, single-family dwelling with a shed. The footprint is just under 1,100 square feet, and it's nonconforming in almost every way a property can be nonconforming. The front yard setback is currently 3 feet, where 25 is required. The side yard setback to the north is 3.4, where 10 is required. Side yard setback to the south is 1.8, where 10 is required. The rear yard setback to the shed is 1.9 feet, where 3 is required. The lot coverage by structures is currently 36.3%, where 20 is allowed by right, and up to 25 by special permit. It is somehow conforming to lot coverage by structures, paving, and parking. Just one second. I just wanted to check one quick thing before I launch into this. The existing structure is dated. It's in kind of poor condition, structurally, aesthetically, functionally. The waste is currently handled by a cesspool of indeterminate age. And though the property itself is old, it's not historically significant. I just checked, Mr. Duffy, it is not in a historic district.
All right, okay.
And not, therefore not subject to review. It is not possible to rehabilitate this existing structure without triggering substantial improvement under the FEMA guidelines. So Mr. Parker has proposed to raise the existing dwelling and to rebuild a new three-bedroom home, with installation of a new three-bedroom denitrification system, which has already been approved by the Board of Health. This would result in a first floor elevated in compliance with the flood zone standards, approximately 8 feet above the existing grade. This would allow for use of the, that space as a garage, which decreases clutter on-site and allows for the elimination of the shed. There's a decrease in footprint of the structure, slightly over 100 square feet, which reduces the lot coverage by structure from 36.3 down to 32.8. The front yard setback is minimally improved. It goes from 3 feet to 3 and 1/2. The side yard setbacks are improved in a more substantial manner. To the north, it goes from 2.4 feet to 8 feet. And to the south, it goes from 1.8 feet to 6 feet. The rear yard nonconforming setback is eliminated. It'll go from 1.9 feet to 29. The lot coverage by structures, paving, and parking will also remain conforming at 38%. Structure does increase in height from approximately 15 feet to 31 feet 8 and 1/2 inches, which is due in large part to compliance with those flood zone standards. The number of bedrooms remains the same, and there were, as I mentioned, a new, a new denitrification system. This has been reviewed by Concom, and an order of conditions has been issued. I don't think anyone that's present tonight was on the board at the time, but there was a very similar project at 52 Deacons Avenue that the Zoning Board approved in August of 2021. I looked at the decision, and Mr. Morris was the only one voting member who's still here. But nearly identical facts. Very similar projects, very similar lots, very similar proposals. Same engineer and architect in that case. I'm not sure who their attorney was. I've heard he's very handsome and funny, and he somehow got it approved, so he must have done okay. So we need-
Because we don't know who it is.
Not sure. It remains unclear.
Is that the Hudson property?
It is the Wagner property.
It's down by the yacht club, I think.
It's, I can show you, because I have the GPS map.
If it's down by the yacht club, it's not the one I'm thinking of.
No, I can show you. It's, it's right here. And it's that one.
No.
That was, this was approved in 20, August 2021.
What's the setback on that one in the front?
About the same, about, about 3 feet, because you, the, the road, the road layout comes up-
Comes out 10 from, yeah.
Yeah, at least 10. So very similar project, and I think it provides a really strong comparison. Because of the existing nonconformities, and because it will remain nonconforming in many ways, this does require a special permit under 240 10.2A. That allows for pre-existing nonconforming structures to be changed by special permit, provided they're not substantially more detrimental than what exists. You're asked to consider the standards of 240 12.1E, and whether or not the alteration creates any new dimensional nonconformities, impairs views and vistas, and reasonably conforms to the neighborhood. In this case, there's no new nonconformity created. The number of existing, a number of the existing nonconformities are improved, including lot coverage by structure, the front yard setback, significant improvements to the side yard setbacks to the north and south, and elimination of the nonconforming rear yard setback. There's no effects of views and vistas of the public way. The view here is really of the harbor to the, to the west. And it is consistent with the neighborhood. Many of the requirements of 240 10.2A overlap with those in 240 11.3A4. That provision allows for lot coverage by structure exceeding 20% in the residential C zoning district. And again, you're asked to consider the size and height of the structure in relation to the neighborhood, the effects of shadow, impacts on views and vistas from public ways, and the effect of nitrogen on coastal abeyments. In this case, there's no impact to the views and vistas from public ways. Though the building is larger, it is in an area with many similarly sized structures. There's no effect of nitrogen on coastal abeyments, as is a new denitrification system designed for the same number of bedrooms. As to the size and fit with the neighborhood, we did submit a lot comparison worksheet for nearby properties, looking at 25 properties within a 300-foot radius. As proposed, this is below the average footprint, and certainly not out of character with the average gross floor area. Of those, 25, 18 have larger footprints, and seven have larger gross floor areas. This property, as proposed, is certainly appropriate with, and in character with those nearby properties. We did see the referral from the engineering department. The intent would be to remove the existing fence, but to leave the cobblestones or the flagstones, which engineering indicated they were fine with. This project represents a significant improvement over the existing conditions, replaces an aged cesspool in a house in significant disrepair, both structurally and functionally. It will not create any new dimensional nonconformities, will improve existing nonconformities or eliminate them entirely. There's nothing about this proposal that is substantially more detrimental than what exists, and it meets all the requirements of 240 10.2A, 11.3A4, and 240 12.1E. For these reasons, I would ask that this board grant the special permit, and I would be happy to address any questions that you may have at this time.
Take it away, Mark.
Well, Kev, you were on a roll. But the staking there is not proper. On the north side, the, the one stake on the lot line is knocked over. On the south side, both of the stakes are, obviously have been removed, and someone's stuck back. They're not driven in even halfway down the taper. You profess here that there, the south side's been proved to 1.8, 1 feet 8 to 6 feet. When I measured the two stakes, southwest and southeast, one was 48 inches, and the other one was 81 inches. And I mean, this is a small lot. And I'm going to ask you another question about that, but I like to see what I'm dealing with. I literally measured them just so I can, I'm just that way, spatial relations, whatever you want to call it. And this wasn't sufficiently staked. I don't know if it was because the ground was frozen, but I suggest simply they could just bring a piece of rerod and start the hole first, because the stakes have been fallen and moved, without a doubt. Also, I'd like to comment, you know, and it's not that we, it is what it is, but I have to note that there's 21, 29 feet in the backyard, but yet you're only giving up 5 inches in the front. But that, that's kind of aside to this. But I was also curious. You said you compared 25 properties, and 18 were larger, so there are seven lots in the neighborhood that are even smaller than 3,000 feet?
Oh, the footprint of the home.
Oh, the footprint, oh, yeah, okay. Because there's, the 3,000 is about as small as I've encountered in the heights. But everybody, as far as I'm concerned, you know, has a right to build on whatever was a lot, is a lot. But there's no way I can vote on, positively on this, because I wasn't able to determine what you were doing. Sorry. You know, and I mean, I went in the slush and, you know, looking for the corner bounds, but when the, the, it just wasn't possible. And like I said, just gathering, you know, roughly estimating 48 in the front and 81 in the back doesn't, doesn't jive with what you're doing.
We can have this restaked here. You know, if, if it can, well, if you're not willing to vote in favor, then we-
No, I'm not. Just for simple, you know?
So we can have it restaked, though, prior to the next hearing.
Yeah, that's-
I would make a motion. We just continue this hearing until the property's been restaked.
Would it be possible to continue discussion? Just-
Yeah, you've already opened it.
In case there's any, in case there's any other issues that come up that we need to address.
I do have one question for the board. I note that the existing house is setback some 3 feet from the lot line. The new proposed house has a pergola attached to the house-
Mm-hmm.
-that actually hits the front lot line. So I think as part of your determination, you're going to need to consider whether that's-
Needs to be pulled back.
...part of the structure, and whether that's an additional encroachment. Because I note that there's an existing ramp, wooden ramp that accesses the house that exceeds the lot line, and I think there are exceptions made for access.
Or they could pull it back.
The whole house.
The pergola.
Well, I mean, the whole, they've got 29 feet in the backyard.
I think the issue there, Mr. Fineman, is complying, is fitting the septic system in an appropriate manner, because we're trying to get as few variances from the Board of Health as, as possible.
With 29 feet, I, I'm not a septic engineer, but I, I still question that anyway, but that's not for me to answer, but I-
As you'll see here-
It will be answered when we, or I'll find it out myself when you come back. But I mean, that is kind of noteworthy, especially, as they say, the fact you got 29 feet in the backyard.
But he's doing a D night, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, as-
It increases the length, it doesn't increase the width. It's just a chamber.
There's currently a 4.8-foot encroachment of the wood ramp onto the road layout, which should be eliminated.
That is being eliminated.
It is being eliminated, yeah.
But I think that's different than-
Than a pergola.
...a structure that's raised, that's going right up to the front lot line. Because obviously, you need access, and potentially, I don't know if the wood ramp was, it handicapped accessibility, or whatever it was. It's just something to consider.
No, yeah, no, you'll have to talk to the client, or whatever you do with that.
We can do that.
Yeah. Anybody else have any other questions up here? Anybody from the public want to speak on this?
The ramp is coming out, he said.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll continue, right? You have a motion, Frank?
Yes. Did you want to go public comment just again? I want to-
Just, nobody wanted, I just did, didn't I? Yeah, we're good. They're all good. It's a quiet group tonight. You have a motion? You have a second?
Motion to continue, yeah, I want a second, excuse me.
Motion to continue. Do you have a date for us, Noreen?
So your next hearing is February 27th. So I think, you know, perhaps where you've got the bulk of this case-
Yeah.
-discussed.
I think it should be pretty quick, yeah.
Yeah. Does that work for you?
Mm-hmm. February 27th? So we have a motion to continue, February 27th, seconded by Mark. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Done.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time this evening.
Thanks. All right, let's move on. Minutes.
So we have minutes to vote for December 12 and December 19.
Make a motion for December 12 and 19.
Wait a minute.
Did you look at it?
Oh, yeah, but was that? I didn't look that closely then. I was just wondering if that was the meeting that you missed, and then it would be right around that time.
So you missed? So you abstained? And 3 is enough?
Oh, 3 is enough, anyway?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, let's move it on through.
So you abstained, okay?
Okay.
So we'll vote, we'll vote them separately. December 12th, all those in favor?
Aye.